The passing of Queen Elizabeth the Second, lights have been lowered to half masks and will remain lowered throughout the mourning period. Residents can send their condolences through the online National Condolences Book opened by the Government of Canada or in person at our Heritage Centre until after the funeral date. I ask that council and staff observe a moment of reflection to mourn and reflect on the life and legacy of Queen Elizabeth the Second, the world's longest-serving monarch, and I would ask everyone to stand. Thank you, please be seated. The first item up is adoption of minutes.
It resolves that the minutes of the meeting held on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted.
Someone to move it, someone to second, councillor Purcell and councillor Jones. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? None? There are no presenting petitions, presentations, or delegations today? Committee of the whole?
Be it resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Someone to move and some? Deputy Warden Marks and councillor Ketchapaw, all those in favor? And that's. The first report is the Warden's Activity Report.
It resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report and COVID nineteen update dated August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two from Warden French be received and filed.
Please someone to move and someone to second? Councillor Martin and seconded by councillor McPhail, are any questions or comments about this report? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you. The next item up is Elgin St. Thomas Age Friendly Network. Thank you Julie.
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin St. Thomas Age Friendly Network Update dated September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed for information? And that Elgin County Council direct staff to reengage the Elgin St. Thomas Age Friendly Network.
Please someone to move and someone to second councillor Martin and seconded by councillor Jones, and I'll turn this over to you Julie, please.
Thanks, Madam Warden, through you to members of council to provide you with some background, the Age Friendly Network last met in November of two thousand and nineteen. And I was approached by Wendy McMillan, who's here with us today virtually, welcome Wendy. To discuss re-engaging the network for our community. And while I wasn't directly involved in the network and the work of the network in the past, Wendy certainly inspired me to think more about great work that the network completed when they were operating. And together Wendy and I considered along with Michelle Harris and Jenna Fenty, how the recent studies and work completed by Elgin County Council and Elgin County staff support the purpose of the Age Friendly Network. So this report recommends that the county take a leadership role in organizing a multi-stakeholder team that will set priorities and action plans and provide community leadership. Through this role, the County of Elgin will re-engage, provide leadership and staff to support the Elgin St. Thomas Age Friendly Network. I did receive a great suggestion from a member of council that a robust strategic planning process be undertaken to ensure that all reports and studies recently undertaken by the county are reflected in the plans for the network. Another suggestion was that a year-end report be presented to county council that indicates what the county's return on investment is with respect to the county's investment and staff support of the network. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you may have. And.
Welcome Wendy, and we're hope to hear some more comments from you. We, we can't hear you Wendy.
Unmute.
Can you unmute Wendy, Jenna? Or?
There we go. Could you hear me now?
Yes, thank you Wendy.
Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. And I'm very grateful for Julie's support for the, for the need to re-engage the Age Friendly Network, which really did some great work. And I look forward to contributing my experience and firsthand knowledge to its work. An age-friendly community that recognizes and accommodates the unique needs of older Canadians has always been important, but never more so than at this time when the number of Canadians sixty-five and over is expected to almost double. And the number of people living alone is also increasing. COVID has also had an impact on older Canadians and made us realize their particular vulnerabilities socially as well as from a physical and mental health perspective. Providing the age-friendly supports that help older Canadians flourish and age in place with dignity in their own home and community for as long as they are able is not only their preference in most cases. It reduces healthcare and other support costs and allows our community to benefit from the contributions that older Canadians can bring. So this has my wholehearted and passionate support. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you Wendy, are there any questions for Wendy or Julie about this report? Go ahead councillor Martin.
Yes, I just wanted to commend, I've worked with Wendy before and I know what a great job she does and I'm really happy to see that this is being resurrected and that the county are taking a role.
Thank you.
Councillor. Seeing none? All those in favor? That's Carrie, and thank you very much Wendy, have a great day.
Thank you.
Next item up is Financial Statements Overview, Director of Financial Services.
Be it resolved that the report titled two thousand and twenty-one Financial Statements Overview dated September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two from the Director of Financial Services and Treasurer be received? And that county council approved the two thousand and twenty-one financial statements as presented and authorized the warden and chief administrative officer as well as the treasurer to sign and publish same for public and funding partner use.
Someone to move and someone to second? Councillor Ketchapaw and Deputy Warden Marks, and I'll turn this over to the director for the comments.
Jennifer, are you with us?
Okay, I think Jennifer's not available right now, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll move ahead to the next report. And then when Jennifer's able to connect with us, then we'll get back to this particular item. And so the next report is Procurement Activity Report.
Be it resolved that the report titled Procurement Activity Report, April first, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two from the manager of procurement and risk be received and filed.
Please someone to move and someone to second? Councillor Jones and seconded by councillor Jair. Good morning Mike, have you got any further information to share with us today?
No, I'll just do a quick overview, but thank you Madam Warden through you to council. So this quarterly activity report just details the awards of contracts that were approved by directors between fifteen thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand. Again, this is the report from April to June. The list of projects and the supplier is attached as appendix A. You'll note that two of the projects at the end of the, the list were for information technology projects that related to the cyber incident. And these were completed using existing cooperative contracts. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you Mike, are there any questions for Mike? Head councillor Martin.
Yes, Mike, it's councillor Martin. I, I would, I just was thinking that when we replaced the tourism van, it might have been a nice idea to go electric considering we have all the charging stations. And that we should be any fleet that we have as a county, we should be moving toward that. I just wondered, or I'm suggesting that in the future, that's what we should be doing. I know they're a bit more expensive, but then there's virtually no cost after that. I've had one for three years now, so I know.
Yeah, I can, through you Madam Warden, if I may, it is on the top of our mind that there is a quite a delivery issue lately with, with electric vehicles. We've been told sometimes in excess of a year, but certainly that is on our radar for future.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mike? Do you have a question councillor?
Yeah, just having drove this county from one end to the other, the only thing that I would caution is that technology is improving and I'd be a little concerned maybe about jumping into an electric vehicle until we can actually determine maybe by other best practices whether that vehicle will stand the test of driving the long miles from one end of the county to the other. I mean, it's fine if you're just going to be in your own backyard, but if you, if you have a staff person that has to be in in Vienna and then the next thing have to be in West Lorne in the afternoon, it could be a little tight to have enough, enough power to be able to do that right at this time. So certainly I think it's something that is coming as it's, it is the future, but I think we have to be cautious before we invest in, in electric vehicles for our geographical immense county that has to be traversed.
Thank you councillor McPhail, I'll go ahead councillor Martin.
Just one comment, I can drive my car to Toronto and back in a day and have no problem.
Any further comments? Councillor Ketchapaw.
Depending on the size of the vehicle, that may be the case, but I would argue that I agree with councillor McPhail here. There isn't the infrastructure in the east end of the county, particularly Bayham, to do a recharge once on site. So to make those kinds of journeys crisscrossing back and forth to county might be problematic at this time. And I would agree that once the technology improves and we get the range available for these particularly larger vehicles, then it's worth considering, but this time I agree with the purchase that's been made.
Councillor Martin.
Just one other comment, I plugged mine into a standard plug so it can plug in any, any building to recharge. Take a special unit if you carry your charger with you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie, thank you, and thank you Mike.
Thank you.
The next item is, is Jennifer with us now? Oh, there she is, hi Jennifer, I didn't see you there. So we, we're at the point where we'd like to hear a bit more information about your report.
Yes, thank you Madam Warden, through you to members of council. I did have a technical difficulty, so disconnecting and reconnecting seemed to have fixed that. The report before you today brings forth the completed two thousand and twenty-one financial statements for council's review and approval. And before final consideration of the recommendations on the report, we'll hear from Graham Scott Ends, the county's audit firm. He will share their audit opinion and further discuss the finalized financial statements. So if we could see slide one of the PowerPoint presentation, please. I'm thinking. There we go. Thank you. Um, the County of Elgin, as we talked about at budget time basis, their budget on a net income approach. And we would like to identify today how taxation is used to fund operating and capital purchases using this methodology. As well, some departmental operating revenue budget containing funding or taxation that is strictly available for capital projects will be identified. Amortization is included on the operating expenditure side and is applicable to capital purchases. Municipalities are required to fully fund their operations first. And after funding and user fees, taxation is used to fund the remainder of the municipal operations. Any additional taxation is then used to fund capital purchases. And unfunded capital is supplemented using debt, and that's the only portion that we can fund by debt. Our overall budget shows on the financial statements as a surplus because the capital items are not included in the operating budget, but still must be funded using taxation or government grants. Next slide. Next slide. Council normally receives the budget in the form of the departmental summaries. Additional reporting throughout the year is also presented in the, in the same format as the departmental summaries. However, on the financial statement sections are itemized in different way, which is a standardized format required for financial statements as per the Public Sector Accounting Board. Both formats do contain the same basic information, but for the purposes of this presentation, we'll use the familiar departmental summary format to explain the year-end information, which then links two numbers in the financial statements. So on the revenue side, we've identified some areas using asterisks that include capital funding. So the grand total in funds both the operating and capital. The corporate service, corporate activities department includes taxation that's levy to fund both operating and capital. And the engineering department includes major capital funding from the following partners. Ontario Community Infrastructure Program, Canada Community Building Fund, which was formerly the Federal Gas Act, and Investing in Infrastructure Ontario program, which is rural and northern funding stream, and that was for the Port Bruce Bridge project. So the next slide, please. On the expenditure side, amortization is the main item that is within the expenditure side, and that's also used to fund capital. And it's important for us that we can fund our amortization and use the existing capital or use of existing capital while still having some surplus to fund additional capital purchases at the end of the year. Debt repayment is not an operational expense, however, the interest paid on the debt is an operational expense. So when we take the surplus or surplus on this expenditure side, which is three point two and subtract the deficit on the ex, the revenue side of two hundred and twenty thousand, we get approximately three million dollars in surplus this year. Then that budget, we derive that from adding together the budget and revenue and budget expense as presented on the previous two slides. And the net actuals are compiled by adding together the actual revenue and actual expenses. So you see here, we've identified the net budget as twelve million, one seventeen, two thirty-eight. And that is found on the financial statements on page five. Next slide, please. The net numbers are obtained by, as I said, adding together the net budget equal to revenue budget less expenditures budget and the net actuals equal to the revenue actuals, thus the expenditure actual. And on the financial statements, you would, you would see the actual amount of budget. But you would not see the actual amount of, of the actuals because we are consolidated with the health unit. And the health unit budget is zero, so that does not add anything to our budget amount. However, they did have an actual surplus last year of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two ninety-three. So that is added to our amount of fifteen, one eighty-six, which brings it up to the fifteen, three seventy-seven, which is shown in the financial statements. So we've provided for you an explanation of our side for you on these slides and an explanation of the surplus of three million, sixty-eight, eight forty-one on the next slide. So at a high level, um, did not go through each department, but at a high level surplus to budget, we had lower than expected recoveries of approximately two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Interest income was higher than budget of two hundred and twenty-six thousand. We had some more supplemental taxes than we had budgeted, which was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Social services actual was less than budgeted, which was two hundred and seventeen thousand. We had carry-forward operational projects of a million and sixty-one, ninety-five, and that can be found on C, in appendix C under the carry-forward operation project number in more detail for you. And we had eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight fifty-three of wage and benefit savings. This was due mostly to vacancies and lower staffing and wasn't related to the home staffing. We had savings in mileage, meals and development of ninety-one thousand due to less travel and other operational savings in utilities and purchase services, et cetera, of about six hundred and ten thousand. And this was across all the departments. Next slide. So at this point, it looks like fifteen million, one eighty-six is a very healthy surplus at the year-end. But as we said, we still have to fund our capital side, so that means if we take out the taxes and we take out the major capital revenue and then we remove the amortization, we see that we had approximately twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars in operational expenses that we still needed to fund using taxation. Next slide. Sorry, next slide. There we go. So twenty-one million is to be funded from taxes through operations. We had forty-one million of taxes that we collected last year. And the remaining twenty million could then be used to fund our capital process, projects. Additionally, we had approximately six million in provincial funding, which then we can put towards our capital. So the amount that we needed to fund, we, we spent approximately thirty million of capital last year and we had six million in debt. We had principal debt repayment of eight hundred million, or sorry, eight hundred thousand and approximately four hundred thousand change to the working progress year for year. The unfunded capital was a surplus last year of one point seven million. And what we did with that surplus, we put six hundred and fifty thousand away on in our closed capital reserve. And that is shown on the closed capital report as a surplus. We put a hundred and fifty-seven thousand into our donations reserves for future use. And the rest was transferred to mill rate reserve in order to fund the carry-forward cap operating projects of a million dollars. We were a little bit underfunded on that part of the, of the budget. We do have approximately eleven million dollars in working capital, so we will be able to manage that short, small shortfall. It should be, it's interesting to note, I put a few things here, that the twenty-six million can be more easily identified by adding the surplus with the amortization, and that brings forward the surplus for capital that we have identified up here in yellow. And that a municipality can only use debt to fund capital expenditures. Approximately fifty point nine percent of the taxation that was used, that was, that was raised was used to fund operations. And forty-nine point one percent of the taxation that was raised was used to fund capital in two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide. The appendix C that was provided to council included information for purposes to outline the carry-forward enclosed projects in more detail on both the capital and operating side from the two thousand and twenty-one year. The carry-forward projects do get added into this year's current operating budget and capital budget and the most significant capital project this year, of course, was Terrace Lodge. That's getting carried forward. So below, we've just summarized how we came up with our forty point five nine nine million in carry-forward projects for two thousand and twenty-one on the capitals, on the working papers on this financial statements. And that would be note nine of your financial statements. So at this point, I'd like to ask if there's any questions that council has regarding what we're showing at this point.
Hey, thanks Jennifer, are there any questions for Jennifer, council? I don't believe anyone has any questions Jennifer, but that was an excellent report. And thank you for explaining everything to us so thoroughly.
Great, so I'd like to invite Rob Foster and bring up the financial statements for him. That he can then speak to those financial statements and provide the independent audit findings for two thousand and twenty-one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to go through the financial statements. Obviously with Jennifer's very detailed explanation, she did steal some of my thunder, so I guess the good news is that I'll be shorter than I normally am. But I will try to add some value to, to the, the meeting today. So if we move forward to our page two, which is our independent auditor report. One more page. So this is our opinion on the financial statements, so it's a, a non-qualified opinion, which is what you're looking for. And I'll just read our second paragraph that's, in our opinion, the county's consolidated financial, financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the county as at December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And the results of its operations and its cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian accounting standards for public sector entities. So again, that's the opinion that you're looking for. If we could move forward to the statement of financial position. So this is what often is thought of as a balance sheet, and it does have comparatives for two thousand and twenty. So usually I like to just highlight a few changes if there are any major changes year over year. So on that, the cash, as Jennifer had mentioned, your working capital has improved with, basically with the addition of the long-term debt. You were able to do some funding of some capital that had used in the previous year, had used some working capital, so that's been replenished. Your investments, just the ICEs and money market funds, so those are side aside related to reserves and for unexpendable capital that you've set aside for. Accounts receivable, very consistent for the most part year over year, we did have a a few extra municipal grants that were, or sorry, provincial and federal grants that hadn't yet been completely received at year-end. And then the loans receivable relates to the, to the libraries that are being repaid. The total financial assets of just about forty-six and a half million. On financial liability side, our accounts payable and accrued liabilities are up a fair bit, but they do really relate to the, the number of capital projects, holdbacks, those type of things that are undergoing at the year-end, so no, no concerns there. And then as well, on the long-term debt, you can see that there was the six million dollars taken on in the year relating to the, the lift bridge. So over the last couple of years, we borrowed approximately twelve million over that period, or sorry, fourteen million over that period. The average interest rate between those two loans is one point seven three five. So again, as far as getting debt at before interest rates started coming up, obviously did a great job in, in securing those funds. Um, so total financial liabilities of two point, uh, almost two point eight million. Um, and our financial assets going down just because of, of taking on that additional debt. Uh, non-financial assets, tangible capital assets. So, um, as Jennifer had gone through, your, uh, budget is definitely, uh, heavily um, involved in tangible capital assets with approximately half of those funds that you're raising going towards that. Um, you had close to thirty million dollars in additions in the year. Uh, the number of those being in work in progress, not yet complete, the terrace large lodge being the, the largest uh, and eleven point five, uh, in amortization. Uh, so total accumulated surplus, uh, two point four seven million, or sorry, turn for seven million. Uh, the bulk of that, uh, two hundred and twenty eight, uh, million being tied up in tangible capital assets. The next page is that statement of operations, which, um, I'm not going to go through in very much detail because Jennifer, um, very much focused on that. Uh, just, uh, in totals, uh, fifteen million in surplus versus a budgeted twelve. Um, the bulk of, 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 uh, that surplus uh, or the reason that we have a surplus, uh, from a budget standpoint is, as Jennifer had mentioned, uh, we do budget uh, both amortization, uh, as well as, uh, budgeting for tangible capital assets, which are uh, amortized over time and not expensed directly, uh, into the budget. So that is a little bit different than, uh, the, all the lower tiers. So they don't generally budget for, um, for amortization. Um, there were, uh, no new, um, accounting policies or any changes in that regard, uh, for the statements for the year. I think if we just move forward two pages through our statement of cash flows. Uh, the one point I just wanted to highlight here is what this does is take you from an accrual back to a cash basis. Uh, so we had the fifty million dollar surplus, eleven million in, in, uh, tangible, uh, or amortization. Uh, plus, uh, with the changes in working capital, overall, it was a generation of just over thirty million dollars in cash. Um, and if we look down a little bit further under capital activity, we had, uh, thirty point six million, uh, in uh, capital asset additions. So you basically were able to cash flow, uh, in the year, uh, all of your, your capital work. And so basically the six million that was borrowed, uh, was, um, um, basically going, uh, directly to recover that, uh, that working capital. Those were the main highlights from the financial statements that, uh, I was gonna address. Um, we do also want to, uh, comment on our audit findings, uh, which is basically, uh, so this is our stamp on the financial statements that audit findings, uh, relates to the, uh, internal controls, uh, and, and management process. Um, so we didn't have any, uh, issues with, uh, management in addressing any uh, concerns or questions, or if we had journal entries that we thought should be booked, uh, all of that was uh, readily, uh, done and, and very cooperative format. Uh, obviously Jennifer did a great job jumping in and, uh, coming up with, uh, uh, support for, for the numbers this year. So um, very much appreciate her, her help in, in preparing these. Um, and we didn't, so we do, we do test, uh, the, uh, both the receipts, the payroll and the uh, the, um, dispersment side of things. Uh, with our, our number of tests, we did not have any issues with the functioning of, of those internal controls. Um, so overall, uh, excellent, uh, report card, uh, the municipality is um, uh, as it, it progressive by nature, I guess you could say they, uh, you have definitely taken on, uh, a great task in trying to address, uh, tangible capital assets, uh, and the needs, uh, for the municipality in that regard. I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Rob. Other questions? Counselor Ketchapoff.
Thank you, uh, Madam Warden. First, uh, my congratulations to, uh, the finance department and to, uh, Rob for presenting this, uh, uh, excellent report. It is, uh, in my opinion, a, a good news story. Uh, just for the interest of the general public out there, Rob, what would you characterize as the level or trigger point of material? Uh, on a ninety two million dollar, uh, corporation revenue stream?
Right. So, um, as part of our audit, we do have to set what we call materiality threshold. That threshold, um, is, uh, generally set by our institute rules that approximately, uh, the maximum would be two percent uh, of your, um, revenues or expenditures. Um, so we've set ours at, uh, one point one million. Uh, but basically that doesn't mean that the, the statements are, um, are, are out by something like a half million or, or that, and we haven't adjusted it. Um, what it does is it just helps us set our thresholds for testing for, uh, what level of detail we go into. Um, and we have been, um, somewhat, I guess, conservative in our, uh, approach. We've, we were closer to, uh, one percent than we are to. Um, but that is our, our threshold of materiality for, um, for these financial statements.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Rob? Go ahead, Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Madam Warren. Uh, Rob, as you review our, uh, our book of business every year, um. Uh, and, and you understand triggers, you understand the trends, you under- understand the direction that, uh, municipality should be going. In your review of our work, was there anything that you seen or maybe could recommend that we could do better?
Um, in general terms, I would say, uh, that we didn't, uh, come across or, or highlight anything of, uh, major concern uh, in approaches, uh, in, uh, how you do your approval processes. Um, any sort of, uh, concerns with regard to how motions are being prepared or, or any of that sort of thing. Um, and, and I, as I've said earlier in, in the presentation, I think, um, the county has taken a uh, a very progressive approach in, in trying to address capital asset needs, uh, tangible capital asset needs. Um, you know, I think that has, uh, definitely put you i- in a position to, uh, to deal with. Um, uh, in all the needs, whether it be roads or bridges, uh, there's obviously a number of of, uh, major assets that the, the county is responsible for. Uh, and I think you've been able to at least, uh, keep even with or maybe slightly ahead of the, uh, the curve in that regard. Um, you know, and, and for the most part, it's, it's a matter of getting the, uh, the, the contractors in and getting the work done. That's the more difficult process as opposed to, uh, being prepared for that. So, um, I would say, uh, no, I don't have any uh, major recommendations, um, that I would, uh, I would suggest.
Yeah. Is there any further questions? Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
Just to comment, being a part of the budget committee for the last couple of years, I think that's a very good initiative. Um, certainly the budget's pretty complex for the average layperson myself. Um, but we got an awful lot of information gleaned from the budget committee. Just practical information and, and information to help understand it. So I'm very pleased with that. So encourage that, continue.
Any further clues? Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
I just have a request of, uh, our central department and our auditors for next year. Um, if you wouldn't mind having a good luck at the Terrace Lodge funding. Uh, we will be very close to finishing the project. And as you are aware, uh, the provincial money really flows once it's finished and it flows over thirty years for their portions. Uh, help offset the major expenditure. Uh, we have everything in place, but it is in place using borrowed money. And we may be able to mitigate that by minimizing some of that borrowed money, but I don't know if that's a wise idea or not. Uh, because of how the cash flow comes from the province. So if you could maybe figure out how to give us a recommendation or either to stay the course, the way we have it set up now. Or if we try to borrow from ourselves or other department areas and that, uh, to fund it. So that's just for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. Are there any further questions or comments? Well, thank you very much, Rob and Jennifer, and have a great day.
Thank you.
All those in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. The next item off is best practice spotlight organization, County of Algon Homes.
Be it resolved that the presentation titled Best Practice Spotlight Organization, B P S O, County of Algon twenty twenty two, Director of Homes and Senior Service be received and filed.
Someone to move in someone please. Counselor Purcell and Counselor Jones. Welcome Michelle and welcome everyone today.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council this morning. This is an exciting day for us. Uh, the homes have been working very diligently on the best practice spotlight organization designation. And I wanted to just take a quick minute to introduce the team that was able to join me today. So I have Sweeney from the Registered Nurses Association of Ontario with us today. She's been our connection, leading us through this project. I've known Sue for a number of years and been doing work with her in long-term care. I have Dave McPherson from Algen Manor, Manager of Resident Care. Um, he started at Bobbiar Villa with this project version, did significant work with the pressure ulcer piece. Uh, Christine Leonard, Administrator for Terrace Lodge and, uh, Deb Evans, Manager of Resident Care from Bobbiar Villa, new addition, but who's been very actively involved. And Tracy Rutter, Manager of Resident Care, also very involved, uh, Terrace Lodge. And Terry Benwell, our Administrator for, uh, Bobbiar Villa and for Algen Manor has been just a key liaison in all of our project work. We wouldn't be where we are without her leadership and keeping us on task through this project. So I wanted to take a minute to introduce the team. And I wanted to comment that although there's a few members of the team, the entire management team and all of the frontline staff have been so involved in this project work and everyone should be commended on their commitment to our designation. So if we have the slides up, please. If you could start at the beginning of the presentation, that would be great. And next slide. So I just wanted to walk council back three years. We came to you, Terry, myself and the management team at the time talking about a new opportunity and a lot of work and our commitment to that opportunity. And here we are three years later. A lot of, uh, you came out to join us at, at the homes for our launch events and, uh, so I just wanted to highlight some of the, uh, the pieces of the organizing or the, the designation program. So organizations partner with RNAO to implement three best practice guidelines. They're all evidence-based researched over a three-year period to attain designation. Our homes onboarded in May of twenty nineteen and we partner with Sue Sweeney from RNAO to implement the guidelines to report on our outcomes, to, uh, attend knowledge exchanges, learn from them and present, uh, our, our success stories. Uh, plan for sustainability because it is not a one and done approach. We're committed to continuing with this work and measuring outcomes. What are the benefits to being in a spotlight organization? Uh, I'll have to say Terry and I had some great conversation this week. Uh, one of the things maybe we didn't talk about at the beginning, but we've really identified is the empowerment of frontline staff and making sure that they are part of the change, uh, work that we do. Empowering them and letting them have a say in guiding our work and, and implementing our work. Um, across our three homes, fifteen percent of staff or higher, uh, each of our three homes are denouement best practice guideline champions. That work isn't just dedicated to the RNAO best practice guidelines. We can involve those champions and work across every aspect of the care and services of our homes. Uh, having the support and the access to implementation resorts, resources and the expert consultation behind me, um, and the networking opportunities that Sue's connected us with other best practice spotlight organizations, uh, support to attend the annual B P S O symposium. And we're gonna, Terry's gonna share a lot of information or some information on the positive resident and staff outcomes, the quality indicators. And of course, always in the back of my mind is risk management. And so our project work and the outcomes align with the long-term care legislative requirements. So I'm gonna turn it over to Terry to, uh, talk about each of our three best practice guidelines.
Uh, so as Michelle stated, we did have to choose, uh, three best practice guidelines to implement over our three-year period. So we did a review of all of our clinical, uh, and organizational data that we collect. And we chose our guideline implementations based on that. And so the first, uh, best practice guideline that we looked at was preventing falls and reducing injury from falls. Uh, each one of these best practice, uh, guidelines when we implement has a requirement to, uh, provide data to a standardized database with RNAO. And so we do, um, have standard definitions for each piece of data that we collect. Um, each one of our implementations went through a standard process. So we took a look, uh, we pulled together some teams and took a look, um, at what our current practices were. And then we did an analysis of what the best practice guideline was. And, uh, that, uh, is called a gap analysis. And so we did that with each one of our, um, B P Gs that we, uh, implemented. So specifically to falls, we implemented the Scott Fall Risk Screen. Uh, we introduced comfort rounds, we did policy and procedure updates. And we did education of all staff, residents and families. And families were key in that, uh, engagement piece. Um, because we've seen a real decrease in our requests for, um, residents to be transferred to, uh, emergency department when they understand what's happened with a fall. So that was a, a key piece. And the other piece of the education is that, uh, as you can see, we won't be able to stop all falls that happen in long-term care. Um, it's not possible. Uh, but we have seen a lovely reduction, um, in our falls and we've seen an even greater reduction in our falls with injuries. So, uh, a number of the pieces that we implemented allowed us to decrease injuries to residents. So Bobbiar Villa had a reduction in their falls from seventeen to ten percent. Um, that's from the beginning of our implementation and we measure it actually monthly. Um, so this one goes from uh, a point in time in twenty nineteen to our most current, uh, time of, um, August of twenty twenty two. Algen Manor had a reduction in falls from nineteen, nineteen point, uh, eight percent, sorry, my to, uh, sixteen, um, point eight percent. And Terrace Lodge had a reduction, um, from twenty one point five to fifteen point five. Um, so great results from the implementation of the best practice, uh, guidelines. Um, any questions about, we take questions at the end. Yeah. Good job. Um.
Sorry, I was just, oh, tell what a comfort round is.
Oh, sure, sure. So a comfort round is, um, specifically a resident who's identified by our frontline staff, the falls team, uh, to have a high number of falls and recurring falls. And, um, what they do is implement a specific, um, approach and, um, script almost with those residents when, um, staff members check on them and they are required to check on them hourly. And so they go in and they go through the, um, high-risk questions. Do you have to go to the bathroom? Do you require anything closer to you? Do you need a drink? And, and they go through those scripted questions hourly. So that had the most dramatic effect on reducing our falls.
Thank you.
The next, uh, B P G that we chose to implement was promoting safety and alternatives to the use of restraints. Um, and we use the strategies of, uh, in implementation of standardized tools for assessments, documentation and care planning. This one required extensive education for staff, residents and families. And we really involved our family counsel, um, on this one because, um, uh, there is a perception that if you, you know, just put a seatbelt on someone, they won't fall, not understanding the risks that that seatbelt introduces. So there was a lot of, um, education and understanding, uh, with this one. And, uh, so we did the policy and procedure updates and we saw a huge reduction um, in our number of physical restraints and our number of reduction in what's called also, um, P A S Ds. So other types of, uh, safety devices. So we reduced our restraints at Bobbiar Villa from six point seven percent to four point eight. Elgin Manor had a reduction from five point five to zero point two. And Terrace Lodge hadn't had a, an amazing reduction from forty percent to zero point nine. Um, and if any, Michelle mentioned, you know, three years ago at council when she had to bring, um, a ministry order. So that was a, a huge, uh, change and, uh, absolutely welcomed by everyone.
Oh, just because it's, it's present. Thank you, Madam Warren. Um, how do you calculate percentages?
So the percentages are calculated actually, um, for, uh, the B P Gs, RNAO has what's called a data dictionary that provides us with the definition of each piece of data that we have to collect. And so, um, both, uh, falls and restraints are collected by, um, the number of adults or residents who had a fall in the past thirty days, uh, divided by our total number of adults or residents. And then multiplied by a hundred for a percentage.
Right. Okay. Thanks. There may be some residents that had more than one type of restraint, like a seat. There may be some residents that had more than one type of restraint, like a seatbelt and a tabletop. So that's why that that process is utilized.
And our third BPG that we most recently implemented was the assessment and management of pressure ulcers. And so we had a number of strategies that we used for the implementation of this one. We had new protocols. We had a screening tool, a new standardized screening tool. And we're currently implementing, because this is our most recent, what's the standard tool, the skin and wound assessment tool. And this one also had a number of education components. And as Michelle mentioned when she introduced Dave, this one also came along with a advanced clinical practice fellow that I'll refer to on the next slide. And so we had policy and procedure updates. We connected with local experts such as Karen Campbell and did all of our procedure, policy and procedure updates. And we had a reduction in our newer worsening pressure ulcers, again at Bobier Villa, 3.6 to 1.6. Elgin Manor from 8.1 to 2.4 and Terrace Lodge from 15 to 6%.
And we'll go to the next slide. And on the screen, you'll see some smiling faces and these are some of the champions across our three homes. Again, there's a minimum of 15% of staff that are designated now as champions that work across all departments. So we have that true interdisciplinary approach when we're looking at implementation of best practice guidelines. The, these persons are individuals who are passionate about using research evidence to improve healthcare in our homes. And that recruitment and continued support of the champions is an ongoing deliverable. So where I said it's not a one and done, we're still going to be looking to provide those opportunities to provide the education for additional champions within our homes and just to support that continuous quality improvement and overall resident, family and staff satisfaction. And I'll turn it back to Terry.
So our exciting advanced clinical practice fellowship. The picture you see on the slide there is Justin Evers. He's one of our frontline RNs at Bobier Villa. And so Justin, Dave and a mentor that was arranged through RNAO were able to complete a competitive application process. And one of the big successes with this is that we were successful on our first application. As Sue can attest to, there are many homes and many other healthcare organizations that do two or three attempts before actually being successful with an advanced clinical practice fellowship. And so Justin and the team proceeded with evaluating what our level of education and knowledge of our frontline registered staff were in the homes and what was required in order to improve their education related specifically to decreasing pressure ulcers and wound care. And so Justin developed an education program for registered staff across all three homes that we are currently and will continue to implement. And he also has on the table a submission to the Journal of Advanced, sorry, the wound care, the wound care journal. And we are just awaiting final approval for publication. And so it's titled, "The Pressure Injury Education in Long-Term Care: A Quality Improvement Project." And it takes into account the analysis of nursing knowledge and education, pre and post-education, a knowledge base. And the journal is the Canadian Journal for Wound Ostomy and Continence Nursing.
Great. And next slide. So Terry shared a lot of great information, those statistics that we're so proud of for our homes, with those positive quality indicator outcomes. I wanted to share a little bit more about our achievements and our successes. So when we were stood here before council in 2019, we had no idea that COVID-19 was coming our way and that we'd still today be, you know, implementing pandemic measures and managing outbreaks. And that's, and just the health human resource challenges that have come along with the pandemic. So here we are, we received, received a PSO designation status achieved during the course of a COVID-19 pandemic. And Sue might talk about it, but if she doesn't, the, just the fact that we have three different sites and Sue's experience when there's an organization that has more than one site, they really truly focus on designation at one site and then rolling it out across. We didn't take that approach. We wanted consistency and continuity in our policies and our approaches and the processes. And so we plugged away and we were successful. So that's a true accomplishment. The other major accomplishment is Algen County Homes are the only organization locally to receive BPSO designation across all healthcare sectors. So that's an amazing accomplishment. And Terry and some of the team members present at Knowledge Exchanges, the Clinical Institute. And we're utilizing our project work as a recruitment and retention strategy. When we're doing new hire interviews, we talk about the work that we're doing and the education opportunities. And you can see the eyes just open wider. So there's that interest and engagement opportunity there. And back to Terry on sustainability.
So our next steps, we have identified our next APG to implement. And this was based on data analysis again in our continuous quality improvement approach. So we have chosen person and family centered care. And this was based on our resident and family satisfaction survey. We get, we survey annually. And we saw a slight change in some of the responses from residents and families in terms of the person and family centered approach. So although we've at base implemented some of these pieces previously, we had kind of let a few things slide in terms of, do we always introduce ourselves to residents? Are we always wearing our name badges? Are we always asking them, what are, what's your goal of care for today? What can we do to make today a great day for you? And so that's what we're looking at next is introducing those standards again. And so we have continued engagement, empowerment of staff through education. And again, Michelle mentioned the onboarding of champions. And we'll continue to present and participate in RNAO events. Sue and I actually this week are working on videoing a, a number of frontline staff for presentation at the Clinical Institute next week. We will continue to do our data collection and submissions. And we will have ongoing policy and procedure revisions to align with legislation and evidence. And we are planning our celebrations in each of the homes with our staff, residents and family. We've had some preliminary discussions at our team level and are working towards that. So Sue would then like to, sorry, I guess next slide, yep. So we received our best practice spotlight designation on June 9th of 2022. And we just have a really quick video to play of some of our frontline staff actually celebrating that designation. And it was shared at the RNAO AGM in June as well. Will it play?
This is BPSO from Elgin County, Ontario, Canada.
Maybe we'll have Sue just to her.
Sure. So it's an absolute honor to be here speaking to you and extending RNAO's congratulations to Elgin County for their dedication to implementing evidence-based practice and their designation as a best practice spotlight organization. I've been lucky enough actually, since I started RNAO 11 years ago, to work closely with Elgin County because my office was actually located at Elgin Manor for several years. So it's been an absolute pleasure throughout their designation especially, but throughout our relationship, Elgin County staff have consistently supported educational opportunities at RNAO by presenting their exceptional work at launches, symposiums, institutes and workshops. This month alone, as Michelle mentioned, she's actually presenting at a leadership workshop. And Terry and her team from Elgin is presenting at the Clinical Institute. The Elgin County team is never hesitant to assist other organizations in the goal of delivering quality care. And I can always count on their support when others are in need. Their work, dedication and compassion was not only positively impacted the residents and staff of Elgin County homes, but has impacted homes provincially. Congratulations for their commitment through COVID-19, all the challenges that it presented. They continued to deliver quality through best practices. I look forward to the future and I appreciate the opportunity to work so closely with such an amazing team.
Thank you, Sue. And we're going to do the certificate presentation, but I just wondered if there was opportunity to have questions before we do so.
Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Congratulations to the whole group, Michelle and Terry. I can't go by without highlighting the Southold past resident. I grew up in Southold. Terry, thank you for all the hard work. You mentioned about 15% have come on board and through a very tough time too. And what do you see as, if, if we come out of this pandemic is going to be a larger buy-in from the, the group that's worked so hard over the past two years?
Yeah, I don't know about the Terry. You want to speak to that or I can, but I think that that interest is there. It was easy to get 15% of our staff to participate in the education and they're eager to do the work. We've, we've struggled a little bit to have them get super involved just because of staffing challenges. But they're still, they still regularly check in and we ask them to do something or give them a special assignment. They're right there. So I think other people see that, you know, those people being involved and it creates a support and opportunity for others. And as I say, when we do new, new hire interviews, their eyes just light up when they hear about the opportunity.
And I also think it gives them opportunity to focus on something other than COVID.
Yes.
So they get to look at quality here and they get to make, it empowers them to make some positive changes.
And we spoke earlier that, you know, having them involved in the changes is, is really the, the key to success and buy-in, right? So they know they have a voice, they're more apt to continue participation.
Deputy Warden, you had your hand up and then Counselor Martin.
Just simply thank you and congratulations, but it's, you know, like wow, and so practical. And you know, a fall can be so debilitating, people lose their confidence, et cetera. And if you can prevent that, it's, yeah, you're, you're doing great, great stuff. So thank you. And the word champions, you are, all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Martin.
Yes, and thank you through Madam Warden. I, I like the idea, the very fact, I congratulate you. It's wonderful what you've done. But the idea that you're taking and listening to your, your frontline staff and that they have the input, that, that really works. I know I, I'm on the hospital board and I know with the, the lead there, et cetera, that they, they value that and they have huddles, et cetera, every week. And their frontline staff ideas, they reward them. They have Kaizen events, et cetera. And I know it's just made a huge difference at the hospital. So using your frontline staff and listening to them and letting them make the suggestions on how to improve things really makes a big difference. So I congratulate you. Well done and proud of what you've done.
Thank you, everyone.
Counselor Purcell and then Counselor McPhail.
Yeah, I, I think on a political level, this gives us a great opportunity. We met with the minister at AMO, as you know, and he, I think he was sincere when he said he would talk direct with the warden and senior staff from our county, trying to learn about our best practices. This is something we certainly should share directly with them. Gets lost in all the paperwork up there and they won't know about how well Elgin County has performed. And I think the emphasis has to be on the reason it's successful is all these numbers are real people. We have real people that are not falling down and getting hurt. We have real people that have less bed sores. We have real people that don't have to be physically restrained as much as we had to do in the past. So it's very, very real and it's a great opportunity to celebrate what you folks have done. But also emphasize to them the way this whole industry should be going.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. Counselor McPhail, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden. Certainly it's gratifying to sit here as a member of Elgin County Council. And as we've heard this morning, to be recognized by our peers that the work that's being done in Elgin is being noticed. And it is changing the way our seniors are looked after in long-term care. But my question, and I don't know if maybe there's an answer to it, maybe there's a not, but what have we done as a corporation to, to really recognize these people that have gone above and beyond and have created these numbers of that we, do, do we have some, some kind of organized process that we can recognize and formally thank the new direction that's being taken place? I don't know if that's in the works or not, but I, you know, as we say, thank you, sitting around the table here. Certainly from my heart, I thank all the people that have worked so hard on this, but I think it's bigger than that. It's people that are walking the halls of the homes right now that are really the ones that are doing the work. And I think that we really as, as a council need to formally thank them for that work in some form or other. And I don't know what that is. I'll leave it to smarter people than me.
Are there any further comments?
Well, I would, I would like to make a few comments. Number one, I believe that you've picked the top three things that really need to be addressed. These are very important issues. And the reason they're so important is because if we don't address them, our residents aren't getting the best care. So I really commend you for picking these issues. And people think that falls are, you know, maybe that's what they're going to hurt themselves, but there's so much more to it than that. Restraints, we've been not wanting to use them for years and it's wonderful to see the numbers going down, that we do not have to do that. And as far as, you know, the, the pressure treatments and things for this, like, like people don't realize that elderly people suffer so much from this and it can cause a lot of problems. So it's not just all about that, you know, it's a, it's a whole bunch of things. The one thing is, I know it's great for our staff to learn this and to be a part of it, but it's wonderful for our residents because when they're looking for a facility that they would like to move into, wow. You know, they're, I'm sure they're very happy when they hear this, that there's this kind of care. So I know there's a lot of work involved and we can sit here and, and, you know, congratulate you all day long, but I know how hard the work is and I commend you because there is so much documentation and it's, it's just a lot of work. I've, I've done some of it myself. So I, Michelle knows that health prevention is huge with me. And it, there's just so many things that can happen. So I, I can't thank you enough for all you're doing. So thank you so much for coming and thank you for doing this for our residents.
Yeah, thanks for the very kind comments. And we'll just do a quick photo if that's okay, for the presentation of certificates. Okay. So I'll have the team, do you want us over here, Jess? So I just want to gather my. Maybe we'll come in, drive the chair, Sue. And Sue, you should be presenting them to the home. I think right where you are. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, and Tara's live, we're gonna take it because we'll come up to her as large, but we'll have to have a photo later, but we'll get students here and come out of order. Hey, thank you so much, everyone. Have a great day.
Okay, so all those in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. The next item is Accessibility Content Style and Design Guide and Creating Accessible Documents Guide.
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin County Library, oh, sorry. Be it resolved that Elgin County's Accessibility Content Style and Design Guide and Creating Accessible Documents Guide be received for information.
Someone to move and someone to second Deputy Warden Marks and seconded by Counselor Jones. And is Sarah here today?
We just have to switch out the screen. We're still showing our presentation.
Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
How are you?
How are you? I'm good, thanks.
You know, the floor is yours, Sarah. If you want to go over your report for council, please.
Thank you so much, Warden. So a closed, I have two guides that I created to ensure we are compliant with the Integrated Accessibility Standards Legislation. So specifically, I wanted to make sure we're compliant with the WCAG 2.0 Level A and Double A requirements. So the first guide is focused on ensuring all documents circulated online to the public by Elgin County are uniform and consistent. So this addresses things like font type, the color options we choose, color contrast, making sure we're using inclusive and accessible language and so forth. The second guide is focused on making all documents accessible by providing step-by-step guides on how to use the accessibility checkers that are built into the platforms as well as how to fix any accessibility accessibility issues on the different platforms we use to create documents. I will be providing training on both the guides and on how to make all documents accessible over the next few months for all departments as well as any local municipal partners that have vocalized interest. Documents already on the website are currently being updated and put into accessible format. And the goal of all of this is ultimately to ensure that we can report for compliance during the next ALGA compliance period, which is at the end of 2023. If anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer them. So much.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions for Sarah? Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
Yeah, I just need a bit of a clarification for the lower municipalities. You're sending it out suggesting that they harmonize all across the county as opposed to waiting for them to ask for help. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I have sent the guides out to all local municipal partners and indicated that I am available to not only customize the guides to make sure that they suit the local municipal partners formats and color themes and everything that they use, but also to provide training on creating accessible documents. So I have been in contact with some of them that have reached out with requesting the training. I don't know if everyone requires it because some of them may already have had document accessibility training in the past. But that being said, I will continue to reach out and remind them that that option is available. And in terms of uniformity across the entire county, including the local municipal partners, they will be slightly different just on the basis that we have different color themes and such. But, you know, accessible fonts and things like that are pretty consistent across the board. So hopefully by providing the guides to them already, they can benefit from the information that are in both of them. But yeah, thank you for the question.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any further questions for Sarah? We had Deputy Warden.
Just wonder, Sarah, can you do some advertising? We've got the meeting, joint meeting with the city coming up, a drop-in. Probably a good time to invite all council and make the public aware opportunities at the senior center. I can't remember the date.
Are you referring to the City of St. Thomas Open House that's happening next week, September 22nd?
That's it.
Yeah, I can definitely bring some information about it to that as well. I know right now we are planning to have membership application for the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee and we will also be advertising, we're not advertising, but providing information on the projects that we consulted on the past five years.
Are there any further questions for Sarah? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Sarah, and have a great day.
Thank you so much. You too.
All those in favor? And that's very, thank you. The next item up is Elgin County Library Policy Revision.
It resolved that the report titled Elgin County Library Policy Revision Collection Development Policy dated September 1st, 2022 from the library coordinator be received and filed and that the collection development policy I adopted.
Hey, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselors Gare and Counselor Martin, and I'll turn it over to you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Warden and and through you to members of council. This report recommends revisions to Elgin County Library's collection development policy. This policy outlines the principles and guidelines that staff would adhere to when developing or maintaining the library's collection, as well as it outlines selection and deselection parameters to inform the residents of the county of Elgin. It's also a critical tool in maintaining a healthy and diverse collection in all formats that respects diversity as well as upholds principles of intellectual freedom. This policy guides important library matters such as purchasing decisions, requests from the public for new acquisitions and decisions about when to discard materials. As noted in the report, key updates to this policy include new content to represent diverse and inclusive collections, equity and access to materials, selection of digital resources, local content and withdrawn materials. Also, more guidance documents are linked throughout the policy with the new references and related document section as well as appendices for the three public facing forums pertaining to collection development. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions concerning this report?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a quick question because we were just talking about accessibility, the the various forms that you have there. Will they be online where I can just fill them in or do I have to print and scan and?
Madam Warden, to respond to the question. Yeah, so once approved by council, we will plan to publish them online, either as fillable PDFs or web forms. We're hoping to work closely with Sarah to determine the most accessible format. And then we can have print copies available in branch as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie. And thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, too.
The next item up is Elgin County Library Programming Update.
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin County Library Pro Programming Update be deferred.
Okay.
Yeah.
So someone to move and someone to second. So Counselor McPhail and seconded by Counselor Ketchapaw. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. The next item, Official Plan Amendment.
Be it resolved.
Sorry, Township of South Old.
Result that the council of the corporation of the county of Elgin approves official plan amendment number one to the township of South Old official plan. And that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the Planning Act.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Purcell and Counselor Jones, and I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to council, this report details a official plan amendment number one already endorsed by South Old Council whereby they are redesignating lands and identifying for residential, future residential development, both of which are located within the settlement boundary limits. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Madam. Just a comment. This is a was the process was started the while we're going through our official plan in South Old. And we decided to table it till after the official plan was adopted and bring it back. There's a opinion that we were trying to push it through the official plan process and we chose to just avoid that whole problem.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jones. Are there any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very thank you. Next item up, Official Plan Amendment, Denton Dunwich.
Be it resolved that official plan amendment number five to the official plan of municipality of Denton Dunwich be deferred for consideration at a future meeting.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. So Jones and seconded by the Warden Marks, all those in favor? Closed?
Sorry, sleeping.
The report is being deferred and so we're we're asking you if you're if you want to defer it or not.
Sure.
So are we in favor of deferring this particular report? That's what's on the floor right now.
Yeah, I would assume it's at the request of the applicant. That is correct. And I have no objection.
Okay, so all those in favor of deferring this report? Eric, thank you. The next item up is Request for Exemption from Draft Plan Approval.
Be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the county of Elgin, in accordance with Section 9 of the condominium act, sends an exemption to draft plan approval for a draft plan of phased condominium on part of part Part Lot 6, Plan 145, Parts 1, 2, and Parts 7 through 10, 11 R 8159 or 85 Forest Street in the town of Elmer, File Number 43CDAY 2201, and that staff be directed to prepare and issue a certificate of exemption and sign and submit the final plans to the land registry office in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act and the Condominium Act.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. For Jones and Counselor McPhail, and I'll turn it over to you again, Brian, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. In accordance with the condominium act, simply put, as a recommendation indicates, developers are permitted to proceed with development outside of draft plan approval process and through a site plan approval process. And such is the case as it relates to this file and and the exemption for you is to grant that at the request of the developer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Brian concerning this report? And all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Next item is Traffic Calming Options. So we're going to have Brian give us you, we won't do anything further until he gives us all the options that are available. So if you'd like to give us more information, Brian?
Happy to. Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. So as directed by council at at its meeting on September 14th, the council had asked for detailed costs and maintenance considerations associated with a pilot project pertaining to potential deployment of traffic calming measures on East Road in Port Stanley. So the report before you details three options for which staff have reviewed and I want to again reiterate, as was mentioned, as part of our September 14th meeting, traffic calming measures from a technical standpoint are not warranted on East Road. That said, if council chooses to proceed with a pilot project, staff have are presenting three options and and would suggest a graduated approach to traffic calming. Option one involves, and we have the unique opportunity at present time whereby Central Elgin is is nearing the completion of a line painting as we speak right now and hasn't yet got to East Road, whereby we have the opportunity to reduce the lane widths by moving line paintings, thus creating an environment for the driver in which they feel confined within the lines. And and there is research to suggest that that does have an impact in that regard. So we would, under this proposal, we would be reducing lane width from 3.5 meters to 3.25 meters, maintaining the buffer width between that and on-street cycling facilities at 0.5 and increasing the cycling facilities from 1.25 to 1.5 meters in width. In addition, staff would also be would also recommend that flexible bollards be deployed at at strategic locations along that section of road in three specific locations, rather. And such bollards would be deployed in the spring and need to be removed at the end of the fall in order to accommodate winter maintenance operations. Option two presented before you is the deployment of speed speed displayed devices. There are locations whereby external agencies and our parties have invested in infrastructure and have sought approval from the county to deploy such devices. As a as a recent example, the municipality of West Elgin has purchased two of these units and and deploys these throughout their municipality, including onto county roads with with full acceptance of county staff as part of their proactive efforts to reduce speeding within their jurisdictional limits. Option three, speed humps, speed tables, or speed cushions. Both, all three options are certainly have immediate impacts. Do result in reduced speeds. Speed hump being the most invasive does have minor impacts with respect to emergency vehicles. Speed tables are more conducive to intersections and thus aren't suggested for application here. So again, noting that it isn't warranted, if so instructed by council, staff would be recommending speed cushions be deployed. We are suggesting right now that a total of five locations be deployed along East Road, three north of Dexter and an additional two locations south of Dexter Line. The speed humps proposed based on the cost assets provided is is a modular rubberized system. And the intent would be, once installed, they stay installed. And what that then means is training would need to be provided to Central Elgin and their and their operations staff to ensure that winter operations are accommodated such that plows don't rip these out of the road. Instead, would raise the plow blades. They would have to apply additional road sand salt in those locations to to deal with winter operations. And then they would continue, very similar to, in some cases, some bridge locations whereby they need to be sensitive around certain bridge infrastructure and they accommodate that quite well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Warden Marks, go ahead.
Madam Warden, I'd like to thank staff in particular for doing this report. I guess I was the one that asked for it. Certainly understanding it is a trial project. One of the things I continually hear is is speed on our roads. On the roads. And I think this is an opportunity for us, no matter what option we choose, but I I think it'd be a good try. I would hate for us to miss an opportunity to to do some kind of a trial project. I could live probably with any of the options. At least it's 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 a start, hopefully to try to address the speeding. You know, after it's here for a while, we can measure it and see if it's working or not, whether we need more or whether it actually works. I would suggest that speeders are going to hate it. Yes, there's an awful lot of people will be pleased with it. So I'd certainly urge us to consider this as a trial project with an open mind, see if it works.
Not sure who was first, but Counselor Jones and then Counselor Martin.
Oh, thank you, Madam Warden. When we were at AMO about a month ago, there's one company that's displaying their wares and they supply photo radar and enforcement. I was wondering if that was something that might be considered as well. It's they supply the equipment. The municipality supplies any signage that is necessary. The municipality supplies any signage that is necessary. The offenders are ticketed legally and the company takes a percentage of that fine and the rest goes back to the municipality. I know our OPP are stretched and this is one way of maybe killing two birds, one stone. Just, just something I saw. I do have contact information on that. Someplace I picked up some.
Thank you, Counselor.
They're quite eager to come into this area. Just thought.
Martin? Yeah, I, I like the suggestion Counselor Jones has made in that I, I don't know, maybe Brian should be given a chance to respond and know, to say what he knows about that before I make my other comments.
For you, Madam Warren, I, I don't really have much more to add with respect to what has already been presented. Again, the, the modular system is, is, is what's being presented. A more permanent solution, i.e. milling out sections of the road and applying asphalt results in an increased capital cost of about twenty thousand dollars per location. So I don't have much more to add on them.
I, I meant response to what Counselor Jones had said about the photo radar coming in. That was, I didn't mean about these. I was going to comment on these.
Through, through Madam Warren, yeah, certainly there's more and more municipalities deploying photo radar and, and legislation and regulations allow municipalities to do that. Predominantly photo radar is being deployed at the present time. You're seeing deployment at, in school zones. And we're starting to see that beginning now. So I'm not aware of any counties in, in Southern Ontario yet that have gone that route.
Other comments would be, I'm assuming that the, the narrowing of the road with the bollards, like the flexible ones in three positions that have to be removed for winter would be the easiest as a test because the other are major installations. And, and we did do this with temporary bollards up on, on up in Lynnhurst Village on their main street. And it seemed to work, but we, at the time, they were strictly temporary, but that would be my thought, that that would be the easiest if we're going to do a, a test model and see if it works. That's more of a test model, whereas if you're going to put that, I, I think the cushions are great, but I don't know how much of a test model. They have them in London and lots of places. I have been on many streets with them. But I don't know if that can be installed as a test and removed or not. That, that was my question.
Through you, Madam Warren, you know, with the exception of, well, even line painting can be changed after the fact. Any of these options presented here can certainly be deployed and then removed at, at the end and reeval, upon reevaluation of, of, of net impact and, and so removed if council desires at the end of the pilot program. Yes, I, I will agree that City Atlanta does have speed cushions, speed tables, and speed humps deployed throughout their, throughout the city. However, I would note that those traffic calming measures are predominantly on local streets.
Counselor Ketchbot, did you have your hand up before?
Yeah, but I'm going to reserve that for a little bit. Thank you.
Counselor Jigir.
Thank you, Madam Morton. So can you clarify the, the total cost implication then? And so you're talking about five locations and are we talking, what you have quoted in the report, is it per cushion?
Yeah, so through Madam Warren, so with, associated with option one, the bollards at three specific locations is estimated to cost for the supply and it's assumed installation of all these would be taken care of or provided by, costs associated with installation would be taken care of by the municipality. So the supply of bollards is at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars. That's, that's option one. And again, we have the opportunity to restripe the section of road because that hasn't yet been completed. That's option one. The speed displayed devices, again, we've provided an estimate of approximately four thousand dollars per location and, and we would be recommending that for the section of road that two would be deployed. And then depending on whether council chooses to go with a speed cushion, speed hump, or speed table, the costs are detailed there below. And again, it's based on a modular rubberized system. And then a permanent application with the use of asphalt would, would, would be exponentially more.
And as a follow-up, so, and you mentioned, so regardless of the option would be on the lower tier, on the local municipality.
Well, staff have stopped short of suggesting who pays for it. We've just provided a cost estimate with respect to material cost and, and made the assumption that Central Elgin would work collaboratively with us and cover all installation costs.
If I, if I may, because as you mentioned, this is not warranted. This is something that we're willing to explore. And if we're in the realm of exploration, I would like to strongly suggest some community input and education. It's, I mean, input is especially education where you can get, it's a chance to explain the different options and the cost implications and the pros and cons and the expected results. Otherwise, I see this as a, a potential, you know, bit of a surprise and across the county. And why did we choose this particular location when we know in the past four years, we've identified numerous county roads and, and locations that are not really warranted, but there's a lot of concern and we're not acting. So I would like us to come up, if we're going to go ahead, if, if council is considering going ahead, I would like that to be preceded with a communication strategy with community input and say, is this a good location to try if this is a pilot project? You know, understanding that we have several issues across the county, is this a good place to, to start? And what are your thoughts on the different options and costs? So because this could come out as a surprise that where it could backfire too.
Counselor Martin, did you have your hand up before?
Yeah, I was just going to respond a bit to, um, comedy, sorry, Counselor Jigir's comments. The line painting one, I think though, would have to that, if we're going to do that, that would have to be decided very soon because we're in the process of completing the line paintings on our road. So that, and we have had a lot of complaints and a lot of requests from the people on East Road that that has been, that please do something about the speeding. That's why we've changed the speed limits. We've had the police there. We've been doing a lot of things to try and stop it and we're still getting cars that are racing down there, especially in, from Dexter Line.
Did you have your hand up before, Deputy Warden?
I, I did. And I, I just like, I'm very conscious about the cost. However, when we get complaints, we always say like notify the OPP and, you know, they follow up and all of a sudden there is patrol and and they hand out some tickets and that does help. But when that officer and vehicle are there, there is a cost. That also means that if they're there, they're not somewhere else in the county because it cannot be everywhere. I'm hoping this maybe is a permanent solution. It's a trial. And if it works, I'd certainly support in other places across the county because I, if we're spending a bit of money and it's for public safety, I'll plead guilty because I, I think that's worth it. You know, there's an awful lot of, when, when people are hurt, whether motor vehicle accident, I'll tell you that the toll adds up and it really, a lot of people suffer from it. So if we can avoid some of that, I think we can justify spending a bit of money on safety.
Counselor Purcell, you had your hand up, didn't you? And then it'll be Counselor McPhail, and I believe Counselor Ketchbot had it. So we'll go on that rotation.
We, I, I don't think we need any kind of a trial or, or any kind of a practice because all of these solutions have already been proven as effective. The problem with, if we do a trial, every municipality sitting at this table has numerous locations that should be treated equally and should get the same installations. And you're just creating a monster that is not necessary. I think it's extremely beneficial, the research that's been done. And if you added in some sources for the photo radar, et cetera, and if the county were to share that information and help with procurement at each municipal level, I think that allows us to identify places that may not qualify technically, but we know locally they need attention and we can make that decision. The perfect example is West Elgin has put in the, the speed indicators. We've already put them in our budget because we already know ad hoc that they're working in their municipality. Each and every one of these items are still for sale because they are effective. So we don't need a, a test or a pilot area to prove that, that they work. So I, I think that the county's role in this would be help with procurement, help with the knowledge exchange and let the local municipalities implement and execute. It's no different than crosswalks. We all have been trying to put in crosswalks at different places. Sometimes we had to pay for it. Sometimes it was justified. So I think we need to keep that principle that if it's justified, the county will do it. If it's not justified, then they will help the municipality do it if the municipality wishes to go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. Counselor McPhail.
Okay. Just a couple of comments on the recommendations here. The, the bollards that are, are suggested. Is there any impact on this road to farm machinery?
Flexible.
Just drive over. I'm always a little bit worried about driving a five thousand dollar combine tire over something, but.
Use the head instead.
So, you know, I, I think if we are sensitive to where these go and it's not going to impact agriculture, the speed signs that we put up in West Elgin, you know, I would, I would cautiously suggest that for other municipalities to, to see how that works out for us because they do have the ability to keep track of speeds, keep track of dates to let us know when speeders are going through and if they're paying any attention to that sign more than, you know, the offender looking up at that sign and knowing exactly how fast he's going over the speed limit. I, I, I'm hoping that it will be a deterrent, but I think time will tell because in a lot of things like that are much like the scarecrow. You know, you put the scarecrow in the garden and it's not long before the crows are sitting on the scarecrow. So I, I think that's something that has to be, has to be taken into consideration. But with Counselor Jones's discussion on the, on the photo, if you want to alter people's behavior, picking their wallet is usually the best way to do it. The rest of these are suggestions and how well they work, I, I guess there's, depends on who you talk to, but I also hear what Central Elgin's desperately saying, we need to do something. I, I would certainly like to ask Brian to come back with some more information on the photo, right? Component, just so we do have that information in our mind that we can look at these three options here and then look at the potential photo radar. Are those photo radars allow, can, can you move them around the county where there's a potential problem and, and set them up with the appropriate signing? A lot of those questions I would like to have answered, but certainly I, I think that that, that is something that probably will get people's attention and they will slow down.
Well, thank you, Madam Morton. Perhaps I should have spoke up earlier because I think Counselor McPhail stole my thunder and that's fine. I am intrigued with the, the photo radar option, particularly when it's suggesting that there's a cost sharing arrangement with the, the manufacturer. And, and I would like to have some more information on that. That, and I do agree that if you want to change behavior, pin them in a pocketbook. And that's about the best way to do it. These other measures are only going to calm down the honest speeder. Okay? If you want to catch somebody and really change behavior, I think you do have to take the wallet, do it. So I would like to see more information on that because I think it's intriguing. But I think Counselor McPhail has already identified, there are several questions out there that we need to have answered. For example, what is, what is our, our, our cost sharing? What is our revenue bearing component of it? Are they portable? Can we move them around the county so that you don't hit troubled spots as needed? Or are they permanent installations? And just how deep are we getting in with this company if, if this is the route that the county chooses to go? So I'd be interested in that, a little more exploration.
Any further comments, Deputy Warden and then Counselor Martin?
I'm going from memory, but I believe it was with Counselor Fair and Mike, Mike Butler, who just retired a couple of years ago, had a meeting with Central Elgin staff. And I believe the comment at that time, that photo radar, the administrative costs, it's something like London or Toronto, big cities, you know? Counselor Jones has said maybe the technologies change and it, it may be catching up that it is appropriate. Now, I don't know. And I'd look some more answers on that too, but with the window here, Central are going to be painting signs here or road blinds. I would really like us to take that opportunity, even, I'd even make a motion. I don't know where it'll go, but if I have to go down swinging, I'd rather go down swinging. I think the opportunity is there that we could try that option one. I'd make a motion that we give that a go.
Okay, I think it was Counselor Martin and then Counselor Jones.
Yeah, and, and all I would say to Counselor McPhail's concerns, that road goes out to highway to Sunset Road, which is not supposed to be having any large farming equipment on it. I, it, it blocks the whole road if it does, and that's a major highway. So I, that's not supposed to, but there's nothing there. It's a very short distance. It's only from Dexter Line to the main highway and, and most people would not use that. They would use Fairview if they were going between farms. So I've never seen any farm equipment on that particular section.
Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, as far as the photo radar, it was just a brief conversation with the president, I guess, of the company. Asked about portability. Can be not highly recommended. Signage needs to be there as far as the legislation I understood. They took care of all the paperwork, basically the municipal enforcement is what I think they fall under. So they take it and they receive the money. They send money to the township. They keep proportion and you get a list of the offenses. So I suppose, I suppose that if somebody wants to go to P O A, they, you have the records to deal with that. But yeah, that was just a brief conversation over you. Southfold has done some speed reduction on one road where subdivisions are being built right now. Locals were a little upset that people speeding on it. We put a couple of stop signs in and didn't work so well. People don't like it. And then unfortunately, you have an association that's pushing for the speed reductions. Staff said no. Council went ahead anyway. Well, there's, there's significant backlash, obviously from people that don't like to stop. And so be careful. But you will, I know there are people out there. I know people personally that are probably thinking about moving because of the speed. But be careful because there's going to be that other segment that don't want to slow down.
Counselor Jigir and then Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Madam Morton. So to clarify right now, the resolution on the table is to receive and file.
We, we didn't.
We, we didn't, we didn't read it.
To have this open conversation.
Because I, I would agree that for every person who requests, like I, I have no doubt that there's been a lot of concern expressed and, and people request some traffic, traffic calming measures. But as Counselor Jones can attest, for every person who requests it, there's a person who does not want it. So that's why I think it takes careful consideration. But it sounds to me that we're back to, this is a, a local municipal partner request and issue. And it sounds like in other cases, it was dealt at the lower tier level and then asked for permission, you know, at the county. So in terms of instead of asking our staff, because I don't think it's in the it's in our transportation master plan yet. Like, I don't think we're we're looking at countywide, you know, safety strategies and and all of that. So should we not ask Central Elgin to to be doing the homework, to be if this is something that is a concern locally? And and then make the decision locally and then come to county for permission to implement that strategy on the county road. Like, it sounds like we've done in West Elgin with, you know, you you have implemented something locally, but then on the county road, you ask for staff for for permission. Because I I feel we're taking on something that is very locally based and that we have where we we don't have a countywide strategy to even be considering pilot projects and all of that.
I believe Counselor Martin and then Counselor Jones.
All I was going to do was second Deputy Mayor Mark's motion that we try number one, that the county would own the bollards, that Central Elgin would pay for the installation, et cetera. And the maintenance and the line painting, which they're already doing. And that that would then be that the bollards are owned by the county and could be implemented elsewhere. If even just the line painting of the narrow road, the biggest problem with it with the big paved shoulder that the just the narrower lines without the bollards. I'm not certain would make any difference. So I'm willing to second Deputy Mayor Mark's motion.
Through you, Madam Warden, to members of council, have has council or is council able to provide guidance with respect to how long a pilot would be in place for? What is the defined amount of time?
If they're running them down for the winter, it wouldn't be very long right now.
Adam Morton, question to Brian, how often do you paint road? Do you do it every two years?
Annually.
Annually, well, there you go.
And Counselor Jones, I know you had your hand up.
I guess part of the question has been answered, so the mover and second have indicated that Ellen County is going to be responsible for the 15,000. I have an issue with that personally, but I'll just leave it at that.
Any further comments about this, Deputy Warden?
Does everyone know where East Road is? And if you're not, because if you haven't, it's not your typical county road. It's pretty much urbanized, you know, subdivisions on each side, but for a lot of it, it's it's very much a growth area. An awful lot of people who walk on it.
Any further comments?
Did you have a clarify? Could we clarify the motion?
Yeah, I I mean, we're having a pretty thorough conversation, but I know there is motion out there now with someone that's moved and seconded, so.
But I'd like to know, I'd like, because it was kind of amended perhaps by Counselor Martin, I'm I'm not sure. So just wanted to make sure what's on the table.
Talk to Julie down here.
Yeah, about five drafts running concurrently right now, based on today's discussion. But from what I understand, it was moved by Counselor Marks, seconded by Counselor Martin. That staff proceed with a pilot traffic calming initiative on East Road in Port Stanley as detailed in the general manager's report entitled Traffic Calming Options as Option One. And that staff be directed to evaluate the one year pilot project and provide a follow up report to county council immediately following the project pilot project, something to that effect.
So is does that sound correct with the deputy warden and the counselor? Because we have to have the wording correct.
No, I'm happy with that.
That's fine.
Counselor Martin had added something about the costs.
I just said that that was what Brian had already told us would likely happen. So I was just reiterating that Central would certainly do the installation and the maintenance, et cetera, and the line painting and all that, because that's all part of our.
That all costs be borne.
I just said that the bollards would be the pro supply be the installation would be done. Only under the ownership of the county because they're theirs and it's a pilot project. And that they could then remove them and drive them somewhere else and see if they wished, because they're going to be removed anyway for the winter.
Counselor McPhail.
Just one last question from my perspective. When is this going to start? Because by the time you order bollards up and organize the installation, we'll might as well leave the service trucks there to take them down. Because we'll probably be into into snow. So what what's your thoughts on when this will start? Is this something that needs to be put in place for next year's operation of the road? And if that's the situation that we're making a decision here for next year, is that what this council should be doing? Or should we be waiting for the next council to make that?
And I'm going to make a comment, which I typically try to let everyone else have their say, but I have to agree with you 100%. Counselor McPhail, there's just too many questions with this and I I personally believe you're right that we don't know the timelines. And maybe it is something, maybe we're jumping the gun on this one. Maybe we need to think it over a little bit more clearly because of the timelines and everything. That's just my take on it. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
I'm pretty sure the bollards that we're on. What's the street work south of the Port Stanley Arena? They're sitting collecting dust and then shop over at White Station now, I believe. So I would think that Central Elgin would be very prompt in putting these up, especially if they're going to be doing the painting very soon. So I wouldn't think that would be a delay at all.
So I'm I'm going to say something. So what you've just said is basically Central Elgin will be taking care of it. Because if you have the equipment and you're doing the painting, it seems to me that you've kind of covered it.
I think he's doing the painting. I think the county is doing the painting under a contractor.
But it's getting done, but the question Deputy Warden suggesting it almost seems like it's something they've discussed or they thought about at Central Elgin's council. Go ahead.
Just the those bollards though belong to the county. They're being stored.
Older being stored.
Yes, they were on.
Need a clarification.
I assume they're the counties. That's truly ma, they were on. So rural road before.
Yeah, three of them more to counsel, just to provide some clarification. Number one, we don't have sufficient quantity of bollards in order to support a proposed option one. We we did purchase a a a couple of sets of temporary bollards as part of the King George Lift Bridge reconstruction or rehabilitation project, but we don't have enough. So deployment, I would suggest they all be deployed at the same time. In terms of line painting in accordance with the county's road maintenance agreement with each of the local municipalities, the responsibility for line painting falls to the local municipality.
That's done yearly.
It's done annually.
Further comments? So there there, oh, go ahead, Counselor Martin.
There are two sets of bollards, you said.
There's two sets.
You're recommending three here.
Correct.
So in other words, if if this went through, it would be, you you said 15 for the whole thing. Is that for one set of bollards or is that for all three sets?
That that's for line painting and bollards. $15,000 is is the cost associated with doing that.
But if we already have two sets of bollards.
It takes that into consideration.
Okay. Because I wondered if we could just put up two sets of bollards and that Central Elgin will be responsible for the line painting anyway. And it wouldn't cost the county anything, it'd still be a test project.
It's under the road maintenance agreement, the county does pay for line painting.
You just said they do or they don't?
Under under the, each municipality has entered into a road maintenance agreement with the county whereby line painting is a responsibility of the local municipality. And so there is.
First them.
But we pay, the county pays, fact.
Because I know that Central Elgin right now are $2,000 over what? Like $200,000 we're behind in road maintenance last time we were and we're still way behind. So anyway, that's, thank you for the clarification.
Are there any further questions or comments? And I'll have to get Julie to, sorry, are you getting that ready, Julie? All right.
You probably don't care where we go.
They paid anything, but then municipality executes. So snow removal.
It's it's under road maintenance agreement.
Okay, so Julie's going to read out the resolution.
Be it resolved that staff proceed with a pilot traffic calming initiative on East Road in Port Stanley as detailed in the general manager's report entitled Traffic Calming Options as Option One. With an estimated cost of $15,000. Provided that the municipality of Central Elgin fund all costs associated with installation and maintenance. And that staff be directed to evaluate the pilot project. The one year pilot project and provide a follow up report to county council immediately after the pilot project is completed.
Everyone okay with that? That's moved and seconded, that's okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Just you had mentioned installation, is it worth also noting in the resolution, the removal? You've mentioned installation in the red resolution. Should we also highlight the removal of said baller? That covered.
Perhaps it's covered under maintenance.
So we could clarify that final statement to say, provided that the municipality of Central Elgin fund all costs associated with installation, maintenance and removal. And that staff be directed to evaluate.
Great, so that's on the floor, we've got a mover and seconder. Are there any further questions or comments before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried.
Final question, are we going to get more information on the photo radar at some point in time?
I just sent it to you. Done your email.
We can move on then. Next item is request to extend reduced speed zone in Eden.
It resolved that the report titled Request to Extend Reduced Speed Zone Hamlet of Eden from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise dated September 14, 2022 be received and filed. And that bylaw number 2058, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits be amended to state the 50 kilometer per hour reduced speed zone along Plank Road from 880 meters south of the north property line of County Road 44 to 565 meters north of the north property line of County Road 44.
Okay, someone to move. Second, also Ketchupaw and Deputy Warden Marks, and I'll turn this over to you, Brian, please.
Thank you, Madam Warren, through to counsel. As per the recommendation, this report is before you as detailed in response to a request from a concerned resident. And as detailed in the staff report, the reduced speed zone will be extended and terminate and or start at the limits of the settlement boundary limits. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian.
Just a comment, I bet you guess I I'm going to support this.
Are there any further?
Good, because you seconded it. Just just a comment to add, perhaps some description to it. Eden is developing out towards the the settlement boundary areas. And with the increase in housing and the population density that will arise from that. This is a, I guess it's a common sense request to perhaps slow that down. Of course, we know signs are only going to be part of it and that people are still going to drive the way they drive. But I think this is a fairly simple request accommodated.
Any further comments? Being none, all those favor? And that's carried. The next item up is POA generator installation tender award.
So upon closer inspection, this report needs to be pulled because it does significantly exceed the budgeted amount for 2022. So it falls under lame duck. So no action needed.
Okay, okay. The next item, Elgin Diamond Senior Living Corp, Royal Oak Senior Living, Elgin Manor Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Resolve that the report titled Elgin Diamond Diamond Senior Living Corporate Corporation, Royal Oak Senior Living, Elgin Manor Waste Water Treatment Plant Service Agreement dated September 2nd, 7th, 2022 from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise be received and filed. And that Elgin County Council authorized the president and chief administrative officer to execute the service agreement with Diamond Senior Living Corporation on behalf of the municipal corporation.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Martin and seconded by Counselor Jones. And I'll turn it over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warren, through to counsel. Since December 23rd of 2020, Royal Oak Senior Living has commenced operation. And in that time, has been discharging their wastewater flows to the county's Elgin Manor wastewater treatment plant and and thus have been doing so in the absence of agreement. So today presented before you is a formalized agreement associated with that continuation. Costs of what cost contributions associated with both maintenance and capital as well as future capital are contemplated and and regarded for in this agreement. With that, sorry, and the agreement before you is is a five year agreement with the option to extend it for an additional five. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions, Counselor Purcell?
Yeah, I think I know the answer, but no, no capacity issues at all.
No.
Any for the questions or comments? Seeing none, all those prefer. That's carried, thank you. The next item, proposed redistribution of federal electoral districts.
Yet resolved that the report titled Proposed Redistribution of Federal Electoral Districts from the Chief Administrative Officer dated September 7, 2022 be received for information. And that the county of Elgin coordinate efforts with local municipal partners and the city of St. Thomas to represent interests and concerns pertaining to the proposed federal federal electoral boundary districts. And that the county of Elgin develop a submission and make a presentation at the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for the province of Ontario. And that the submission and presentation guiding principle be that the county of Elgin be fully contained and represented with within one federal electoral district. With the entirety of Elgin County and the city of St. Thomas.
Someone to move and someone to second, Counselor Ketchupaw and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn this over to you, Julie, if you want to elaborate on your report.
Certainly, thanks, Madam Warren, through you to members of council. I know this is a topic that many members of council are already very familiar with. But to provide members of the public with a bit more information, on August 9th, the Federal Election Electoral Boundaries Commission for the province of Ontario released its new proposed electoral map next regular federal election. Those changes will be discussed at public hearings this fall. And there are some additional details provided within the report of the implications of of those changes within Elgin and St. Thomas. So I am aware that all mayors and administrators met with MP Vecchio to discuss the proposed changes as well. Local CIOs and the city manager met recently to discuss the possibility of a coordinated effort with all local municipal partners in the city of St. Thomas to represent interests and concerns pertaining to the proposal. As such, this report recommends that the county of Elgin develop a submission, make a presentation at the commission, reinforcing the need for Elgin and St. Thomas to be fully contained and represented within one federal electoral district. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Julie, Counselor Phil?
Thank you, Madam Warren, just a comment, I I know Southfold will be applying for that same delegation status to take away at least at this time 20% of our population into another riding, which in the next five years will probably be closer to 30% of our population and all our industrial lands. It really divides the township. It 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 drives that stake between urban and rural that much deeper and we're trying to avoid that at all costs and I know. We're trying to avoid that at all costs, and I know Central Algon probably feels the same way.
Any further comments, councillor Martin?
Yeah, Central Algon, they're taking away more than fifty percent of ours. Um and uh are splitting it into two, so I mean, applying for grants, there's so many things that would be affected. Um and I I agree very strongly that as Elgin County, we need to be all with the city of St. Thomas under one district. Uh councillor or um MP Vecchio has drawn up some other options that she will be presenting to them. That would keep us in line with the the population that um that they're in the right parameters, but certainly, I feel very strongly. I strongly support the recommendation.
Any further comments?
Well, Julie, thank you, Madam Warren, Julie, have you had any uh dialogue with uh? Sex. Are are they of the same thoughts as? We are in Elgin, and there uh a possibility of a joint submission to just make the voice louder. Or do we just keep it uh on a separate level and fight our own battles?
Um through you, Madam Warren, to address councillor McPhail's question, I have not reached out directly to Middlesex County for that purpose. I could certainly do so, um but in keeping with uh. Your comment about having a louder voice and a stronger uh advocacy effort. I will note that there is an upcoming Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. Across our um partner municipalities. And they result from that.
Yes. And did you have a question, councillor Purcell?
Yeah, partially a a question, but but um I I think Julie and the county are doing exactly what needs to be done. But this is uh probably in all my experience, uh the most significant mistake about to happen. That has ever happened to our community. You say a community, I mean St. Thomas and Elgin County, uh so we need to. Not only do the right things, but we need to be screaming. Uh so that uh for whatever reason they're trying to make this happen. It gets stopped because it absolutely makes no sense and it's destructive, which is much more important. I I know that grab hitting the ex-wardens and anticipate the warden to do a separate submission. We need to be encouraging everybody. That has a group like that to do a separate submission so that the uh the decibels. Are so loud that they cannot be ignored, so I think that's hugely important.
Shiger, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Warren, and I to that, I just want to add that in making the case. Providing very specific examples of the impact uh. So in addition to mentioning almost again passing while this will have impact on grants, this will have impact. I I found for having attended a couple of sessions. And that it was lacking in very specific impact. So when I put myself in the recipients of the pushback. It could be perceived as just, you know, resisting change or resisting, because I felt that the. The actual impact was not described uh very clearly. And I think it's our job, like we know specifically what those impacts are, we can't expect members of the commission to know. So that would just be my suggestion in making that case, I think what speaks very loudly are specific examples. Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. The next item up is integrity commissioner, close meeting investigator and municipal ombudsman. It resolved that the contract for the integrity commissioner, close meeting investigator and municipal ombudsman be awarded to Arid and Bearless LLP for a two-year term. And that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional two-year term, subject to section seven point six of procurement policy. And that the warden and chief administrative off officer be authorized to sign a contract for the integrity commissioner, close meeting investigator and municipal ombudsman service. Terms and conditions acceptable to the county solicitor and chief administrative officer. Okay, someone to move, and do you want to move that? Seconded by.
Yep, right beside you.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand, I said right beside you, um we must need a break soon. Um are there any questions or comments? Julie, do you need to elaborate any further on this? Um might be worth mentioning um that this report was. A con report, so the report itself was distributed by email to members of the county council on Friday, and will be attached to the minutes. For uh those members of the public who wish to review it in detail. I'd like to thank Thomas Thayer, C A O of municipality of BAM, for being a a critical part of our evaluation process. And uh with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Are there any questions for Julie? Go ahead.
Just one comment, Madam Warren, will the. Certainly, will this information uh be forward to the lower tier municipalities along with uh? The actual costs related to someone that uh. Decides they got hurt feelings and they want to uh call the integrity commissioner on, that they understand. It's a significant cost for an investigation. Certainly, if it's warranted, it's warranted, but uh if it's frivolous, uh it's very expensive. Out, we don't have the luxury of having our previous uh our previous um investigator that quite probably. He solved a lot of problems at a very low cost, and that's not the case anymore. This is this is big money now, and uh. So uh judge yourself accordingly.
Are there any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Council correspondence items for consideration, there are none. Items for information. Uh Julie? It resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one and seven point two point two be received and filed. Someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Jones and councillor Martin, are there any questions or comments? Councillor Martin, go ahead.
I just strongly agree with the the letter um concerning the strong mayor's aspect, I still think it should be a. Decision of the whole of council, and council needs to work together, and to me, it'll just create division. Allowing a mayor to overrule their council. No matter what the issue.
Any further comments, councillor Jones?
And I would agree to one extent, except for the what last sentence of the last uh. Paragraph, uh what needs to speed up construction of housing is greater authority for municipal. Municipalities should prove development without final clearances from outside agencies, that's wrong. That still should be there, um I think there, I guess the the strong mayor is a bad idea, but that last sentence I have a. I have a problem with.
Are there any further questions or comments? Vote on it then, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Other business, there are no, well, I don't know, there might be some statements and inquiries for members. Are there? Don't see any notice of motion. If so, matters of urgency. Close meeting items. It resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with municipal act to discuss the following matters under municipal act section two thirty-nine two. In camera item number one, which is contract negotiations, and that's two thirty-nine two K. And in camera item number two, which is an organizational update, and that's. And to be. Hey, someone to move and someone to second. Councillor Shiger and seconded by. Councillor Jones, all those in favor? That's carried and we'll now take a recess. Welcome back. A motion to rise and report. It resolved that we do now rise and report. Someone to move, councillor Jigair, seconded by deputy warden Marks, all those in favor? And that's carried, uh first uh item for in camera. In camera item number one, which was contract negotiation negotiations, be it resolved, that staff person directed. Someone to move councillor Purcell and seconded by councillor uh Jones, all those in favor? And that's carried, and the next uh in camera item. For close session item number two, which is an organizational update, be it resolved that the report from the chief administrative officer be received. A move by councillor McPhail and seconded by councillor Jigair, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee. Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations from the committee of the four. Someone to move. Or Ketchupaw, seconded by councillor Jones, all those in favor? And that's carried. Uh next item up, consideration of bylaws. Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw twenty-two dash forty, being a bylaw to amend the schedule to bylaw number twenty dash fifty-eight, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits. Hey, someone to move, councillor Ketchupaw, seconded by councillor Martin, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you, and next bylaw. Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw twenty-two dash forty-one, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council. Of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the September fourteenth twenty twenty-two meeting. Moved by councillor John, seconded by deputy warden Marks, all those in favor? And that's carried and adjournment. It resolved that we do now adjourn at eleven fifty-eight AM to meet again on September twenty-seventh at nine o'clock AM. By deputy warden Marks and seconded by councillor Purcell, all those in favor? And that's carried, and thank you, everyone.